All right, it's seven oh two, so we'll call the zoning commission regular meeting for Monday, May 21st, 2018 to order. And first order of business is appointment of alternates. So for, well, we'll appoint Gavin for Dave Ryan and that's it. Third agenda item is appointments to design review board. We have two candidates, Stephen Antonio and Jim Pennington. And does anybody care to make a motion on those two? Or individually? Mike? Thank you for voting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Stephen Antonio to the designer review board.
Second.
Is there an effective date or anything like that?
This clarification, so one is a vacancy for a regular member, the other would be a vacancy for an alternate.
All right, which one's which?
I believe Stephen Antonio was the regular member and Jim Pennington the alternate. You need them both, so.
Okay, so we amend the motion to appoint Stephen as a regular member? And we had it seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, he's approved. And another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Jim Pennington as an alternate to the designer review board.
Second.
Okay, any discussion here? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you may ask. All right, minutes of May 7th.
Mr. Chairman, on line 35, we made a motion to mast unanimously. I believe that was meant to be passed. And also on line 28, above that, I believe it was the April 25th or 27th meeting, not the April 16th meeting, whatever that second meeting.
Which one, which line?
Line 28. Did we only have one meeting? Did we only have one meeting in April?
No, we were just approving the one minutes though. Do you know which date it was?
It was April 16th. The first meeting was April 2nd. April 2nd, that's right.
Okay, so it stands then, so we don't need to correct that, just change the mast to past.
Mast to past.
All right. Do we have a motion on this? We're just going to accept it.
I move approval with the two corrections that Mike suggested.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, those were approved unanimously with the corrections. Public hearings, we have none. Next item is old business, application, oops, reading the wrong minutes. Application 18 of Matthew Whitmer. Phase Zero Design Agent and Stop &amp; Shop is the owner, actually Simsbury Commons Limited Partnership is the owner.
Thank you. So yeah, from record, I'm Matthew Whitmer from Phase Zero Design. And as many of you know, I was here last time and, you know, one of the feedbacks we got from the design review was we weren't quite there yet at the level, so actually what I'm pointing to you right now is a document that is different from documentation than we received two weeks ago. I would have submitted this last Wednesday, but it's been more of a moving target. So what we had heard is we weren't quite there, we wanted, Stop &amp; Shop wanted very much to do what might be necessary to get us over the hump. So preemptively, over the last couple of days, we've done some design work, we've worked collaboratively with the town planner, which has been excellent. So we presented earlier this evening to design review a modified elevation, if you will, which brings in a little bit more of the colonial elements that they were looking for without deviating too much from the design intent that Stop &amp; Shop wanted with a prototype. This includes adding the pilasters between the windows, making some modifications to some of the coloring, some of the stripes, as you see, or additional trim that have been added to give a little more depth to the project. We've also played around, excuse me, played around with the pilasters and the depth of the pilasters on the front of the building to help to break up the massing of the building a little bit more. This was received favorably by design review. So really in your package, we're looking at review option A. And we're also looking at the second page, which is review option A, which shows a little bit more of the facade as well, starting with the existing facade and then the changes that are being proposed. And if I could just show you the elevation at the bottom of that page, option A, some of the things that we've changed that we've looked at very favorably was adding the pilaster return on the side of the building here to get some depth, extending the cornice line around the side of the building above at the higher element, again, to give that some more depth rather than looking like just a signboard or a theatrical image. And then also playing with some of the ins and outs of the water table as well as the pilasters to get a nice depth, we can get somewhat of a shadow line along this facade. And, you know, I understand this was reviewed favorably, we have a positive recommendation that town planner can share. We do have some other, I would say, minor design tweaks that we want to perform before we are complete with our design, and we're certainly looking forward to that opportunity to work with the town planner to make those modifications. But at this point, with a positive recommendation from design review, we're asking to move forward the project in the hopes that the exterior renovation can be completed at the same time as the interior renovation is being done. I did report last time I was here that that interior renovation is going on right now, and certainly there's a desire when they have their grant open, to have both projects completed and done together. I had showed materials the last time, I'd be happy to show them again with me B or discuss anymore about what's being proposed with the exterior design.
Do you have the brick?
The brick is actually existing, it's a jumbo brick, we're going to match that, and we're actually going to be adding, we're going to be doing the brick pilasters here on top of the existing water table, and then we're going to be adding the brick at the basis. This is the existing brick right here along, and it is that yellow color. So it's really what's there existing, we're just going to match it.
Well, let me just go back to the point that, now I'm not clear. You have not presented a final plan and had final agreement with the design review board?
We have a final agreement, I believe, Pen.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, with regards to DRB's review and favorable recommendation tonight, there are really four, three or four items, and I'll attempt to articulate those. I did submit as part of the last meeting, a potential draft motion. I've added an item number four to that motion, which correlates to DRB's review this evening. Their primary issue tonight, and it was a three to one vote, there was one dissenting opinion, was allowing the applicant to work with staff with regards to the final depth and thickness of the cornice molding on the top of the building, which is a proposed two-piece banding now, which potentially will go to a three-piece and be a little more prominent. The second item was associated with the pilasters. There are four prominent pilasters on the main vestibule to the building, and the discussion with DRB is potentially to anchor those pilasters, in essence, with a base and a base cap, and separate it from the water table. Right now, there's a water table detail at about three feet that goes across the entire front of the building, and potentially pull them out to make them look like structural columns versus faux columns. And the third aspect of that is to work with the architect with regards to the depth of the reveals. The main vestibule right now is proposed to bump out about eight inches. And with regards to the columns or pilasters, the four, there's a two or four inch reveal right now. DRB authorized staff to work with the architect and potentially make those a little more prominent with regards to depth, to give a few more shadow lines on the building, to give a little bit of architectural relief to that. So DRB did take final action tonight, there was an approval, and their approval was a favorable recommendation to zoning, in essence, with those outstanding items. Those are very minute in nature, and I'm comfortable with making those revisions or changes with the architect, with the design team, so long as I'm authorized by zoning to do so.
The changes that are articulated in the text that you have recommended?
Yes.
So what we're missing is a drawing that shows those, we're not missing.
Correct, and again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, again, the, really the three items we're talking about, the renderings, or the thickness of the cornice on the top, where there's a two-piece right now, which potentially could go to three, to add a little more shadow and depth. The pilasters right now are anchored into the same water cable for the entire building, so they potentially look less structural in nature, and we're, and these do have a reveal from the building, without looking at the plans, I believe it's about a two-inch, it's a half a brick. There needs to be a full brick to give those a little more prominence and better shadow lines on the building. This is a very large building, and it's very prominent on the site. And with regards to those, this main vestibule, this is not the.
No, it's me.
That's not the one. Again, looking at this main vestibule, and this does come out from the rest of the building. The original renderings that were submitted earlier today, just after lunch, showed it as one flat facade. The revisions that DRB saw tonight showed those pulled out a little bit, but what DRB wanted staff to work with the applicant on is, is there any ability to bring those out a little more? Again, to give that relief and shadow lines, against a very long building, and they are concerned that having it all on one plane. We have the ability to bring the four pilasters out a little bit, but, you know, maybe an inch or two, but that makes a big difference in a big building, as well as the main vestibule. We also talked originally about the returns associated with the main vestibule, and Phase Zero was able to revise those this afternoon. They do show returns going back into the building, so it looks a little less Hollywood set, that it looks like it's an integral part of the, you know, the structure of the building. And again, I've articulated those in handwritten form as condition number four in my staff's memo.
Anything else you want to say under your memo?
No.
Okay.
Again, I would prefer to have that in typed text to you, but DRB finished at 7:25 this evening.
Six fifty.
Six fifty, but that's okay.
Five.
All right, any questions for the applicant? Any concerns? Any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 1818 of Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero Designs, Inc., agent E and A, I and G, Simsbury Commons Limited Partnership, owner for a site plan amendment for Stop &amp; Shop facade improvements in the property located at 498 Bushy Hill Road. Assessors map B20 Block 508, Lot 001-B, zoned B3. With certain modification conditions to application 1818 as detailed on the following architectural plans prepared by Phase Zero Designs, the elevations and the rendering, the floor plans and various photos. And with these conditions, number one, full architectural renderings, 24 by 36 milar, shall be filed as an integral part of the full set of plans required for the issuance of a zoning permit. Two, the shop drawings and samples of building materials, including colors, markups, shall be submitted to staff in review to determine compliance with the commission's approval prior to installation. Three, the pre-construction meeting, a pre-construction meeting must be held between the commission, town staff, director of planning, and the community development, ZEO, building official, and the contractor prior to any construction activity associated with the site. Such meeting shall be scheduled at a mutually convenient time for all of the participants. And the fourth, director of planning shall review revised plans associated with DRB's recommendations regarding changes to base caps, moldings, and building reveals and depths.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous then.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting a week, two weeks.
Don't worry, it's been a very productive.
Two weeks.
I think you got a better voting, too.
Yeah, thanks, thank you. All right, the next item is application 1823 of Marshall Epstein Rosedale Farms. This has a public hearing scheduled for June 4th, so it's appropriate for us to table till then. Do we have a motion to table till our February 4th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table application 1823 until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, second?
Second. Donna second.
All right, Donna do that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion's, that application's table. The next one is application 1824, and it's the same deal, we have a public hearing scheduled for June 4th, so it's appropriate for us to table this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table application 1824 until our regularly scheduled, next regularly scheduled meeting on June 4th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one's tabled. All right, the third, or I don't know, fourth, application 1825, Sollectran LLC, owner for a site plan amendment for a change of use on the property located at 690 Hot Meadow Street.
For record, my name is Mark Scully, and my wife, Ika Scully, and I are the new owners of the Ensign House, 690 Hot Meadow. We came before this board on April 16th, or about a month ago, with an informal discussion of our plans and our vision for the site. What we have, what we have before you tonight is, by and large, the same drawing, the same plan that we showed you a month ago, it's just got a lot more of the details drawn out, so we're pleased to have a, sort of a more detailed proposal for you tonight. So what we're, what we are proposing is to renovate the Ensign House itself, the brownstone built around 1906, turn the upper floors into apartments, it'd be five units, three on the second floor, two on the third floor. This building that was really built by the first church in the early 60s, when it was owned by the church, we call it the annex, we're going to keep that structure largely as it is. Most of the ground floor of the mansion and the whole ground floor of the annex will become a restaurant. So almost no changes to the historic brownstone. The changes that we'd be proposing to this annex would include some more windows across the front, and then building a porch, which you really can't see. There is a stone wall, we'd move forward and build it into the front of that porch. And then we have a new structure, a gazebo that we're proposing. This would all be for outdoor dining. This brick facade that you see here is actually new construction, it's an external stairwell that get from the kitchen to the lower level of the annex, and it's also a second form of egress from the lower level of this annex. This facade won't look like that, and when we look at the site plan, you'll see there'll be some plantings in, there'll be a holly, there'll be some plantings on that wall, so that would be, that would not show up the way it does there. So this is the western elevation, which is of course the most visible, which you see when you come around West Street, which you see when you come down, down Hot Meadow Street. The elevation shown here is from the south, so with the Ensign Bigford Factory at your back, looking north, which you see is the brownstone, and then this is the annex. We're really embracing the current design, the current features, we have a slightly larger parapet coming off, we'll have a porch off of the back, so that this will be a large dining hall in the back, so that you can step off onto the porch, add some French doors. But by and large, the structure there and the features there, we are, we are really keeping. The stairwell exists.
What material are you showing there for the stairwell?
This one or?
No, the new one you're building.
This one?
Well, the brown, the dark brown, what is, move to the right.
To the right.
Yep, nope, now we need to, that thing, yeah.
The shed.
Oh, this, this.
That's brick, but what's the other thing? Right there.
That, that's there, that's wood.
Okay.
That's there right now, that's, that was the chapel of the.
Wood, board, and batten.
Yeah.
Named Dark Brown.
Yeah, that's, that, that, the intended, that is really no, no change there, that's the same as is there. There's little side windows, side lights there that would light the, light the cross for, and that will be kitchen behind it there. So this back, this back area, as I said, was the fellowship hall when the church built it, it was the art gallery, arts exclusive, that will be really a function room for larger, larger dining events. The elevations from the east, so if you're in the parking lot, looking up at the building, you'll see the mansion, again, almost no change there. This is the annex, again, we're embracing those, those features, we've got a small brick infill here, these windows exist, those are the lower level, that was the old Valley Book Office. These are new, there is a window here, this will be larger now, and this is a new window, and this will open up to the stairwell there, so this will be an entrance for the dining here. We will reconfigure this stair area, there are some fairly large bulky concrete railings that we want to cut down, keep the structural features that they provide, put a nice brownstone facing, and then some Broad Island railings here. And this is a view when you're in this courtyard and you're looking at the annex this way, this is what you'll see. So this window exists, it will be, I think we're making it larger. This window did exist, the bank turned it into a door at one point, but we'll bring back a window there, so these will be, be a window off of the dining area. So really, fairly minimal changes to, there's almost no changes to the, of course, the beautiful brownstone, and fairly minimal changes, really just keeping that structure.
Could you just comment on the, I mean, what I'm seeing there is the gazebo at the left?
Yes.
The new gazebo.
Yes.
And then I see a lot of tree canopy in the background.
Yeah.
Is that there now?
There, yes. Maybe quick, take a peek at the site plan, and, so back.
That's what I was trying to remember, right.
Yeah, it's a different orientation, so there are, I mean, a lot of, it slopes very steeply down here, it's all wooded in here, and then even looking, there are some trees in front, you have some beautiful big, big trees in front.
Well, I'm satisfied you've explained it, Mark. My issue is that you're entitled to the facade that's there, under the current zoning, but the addition of the gazebo raises the question of the fit with the historic character of the road.
Right.
And to the extent that it's screened, it becomes less of an issue or a concern.
When you're coming down West Street, that's a very prime view of the building, you see it fairly early on, like a quarter mile away, you wouldn't see the gazebo, there are trees that come out here. When you're coming down Meadow Street from the north, you would look across and you would, you would see the gazebo. And there was discussion, I don't know if, Jay, would you like to, I'm going to get it wrong if I try, if I try to describe the wording that design reviewed.
Mr. Chairman, as an application, Simsbury Center Code, non-commercial and residential, it's required to go to the design review. Mr. Scully and his team did a presentation in front of the design review this evening, and they made a favorable recommendation to you, in essence with a few caveats. And the primary caveats were associated with the, the form that the gazebo is taking place, and what, again, under the form-based code, they authorized the applicant to work with the planning director on the form of that gazebo, and potentially shortening the height of the gazebo and changing the shape. Again, you have gable ends facing, or gable type roofs facing the road, and there was this introduction of an element that's different than the others. They weren't necessarily super concerned about that introduction of the new element, but they would like to see some potential alternatives where that roof line is potentially lowered, flared out. They established overhangs to the gazebo to try and soften its placement on the landscape as it relates to the other structures. And again, you have a period estate home that has an annex built in the 60s, those two architectural elements are fighting against each other already, and they were just a little concerned about the introduction of a third architectural element and balancing the three. So again, they did make a favorable recommendation, authorizing the planning director on their behalf to work on the details of the gazebo. Again, whether it results in an octagonal shape or slightly variation of that, being square, rectangular, with a change in the roof line, to try and, it's hard in an elevation because it looks very prominent in that elevation, where in reality it is subservient in architectural form to the other two structures. But again, DRB was struggling a little bit with that this evening, they wanted to move the process along, but again, authorize staff to work very closely with the applicant's architectural team to look at variations of that. You do have a staff report from me this evening, there are a number of what we would see outstanding items that can easily be addressed by the applicant with a little bit of additional time. So staff is making a recommendation that you table this application tonight. The town engineer just had an opportunity to look at the site plan at 5:00 tonight, so he hasn't had a full opportunity to review this. I did have a brief opportunity to talk to Mr. Scully this evening, and he appeared to be amenable to agreeing to have the commission table it. But in my discussions with Mr. Scully, along all the steps of this process, he would really appreciate your feedback this evening, so that there potentially could be some finality to the application process at your June 4th meeting, versus holding back on a question until June 4th. Long-winded variation of a simple question, but I think it was important to put it into perspective.
The roof on the gazebo would be what material?
The asphalt shingle, right? That's correct.
Okay.
The same as the annex.
Cause the annex, okay, not the same as the house.
Right. There were some very helpful suggestions made at the, at the design review board on the gazebo, and a month ago, we had a slightly different, we did have a flared roof, we subsequently had a discussion with the State Historic Preservation Office, they'll have a view as to how that should look. So we actually simplified it to somewhat accommodate them, but I like a lot of, you know, a lot of the suggestions and overhang, we talked about some of the ornamental bracketing that's on the mansion, bring that in, potentially that flared roof.
You mean, the flare, you mean the bottom piece of the original mansion, how it goes out?
Right.
Because I like that detail, right?
Again, this is a typical enclosed Juliet-type balcony associated with England and United UK. There is some period bracketing associated with that, also with the covered vestibules, there was some discussion of can you take some of those shapes and forms and articulation and bring it to the southern side of the city.
Questions?
I think it's a fine project myself, with, you know, continued effort on the gazebo. Mike, what I understand is that if you're traveling from south to north, you won't see it any, under the current configuration, you wouldn't see it. If you're traveling west to east, you wouldn't see it until you had made the left-hand turn and looked back. So it's really the north to south.
And the brick stairs really a lot farther back than it looks in the elevation? The solid?
Yes, yes.
The solid brick is really a lot farther back.
Right, as I say, that would be, no, no, and that, I think we're talking about a holly and it'd be some.
Yeah, and it has some, is it brick detailing on the top? Is that what?
That's wood.
I can't see this far. Oh, it's wood?
I mean, that's wood, right, it's a wood, wood, wood parapet, which is very similar to what's there now.
Okay.
Yeah, so where you were looking here, there's, there is some, from the front, you've got the little walkway to the gazebo, then you've got a little.
And it's back, right, so it's not going to be nearly as prominent as it looks on the.
Right.
As far as the other site plan changes, you're still doing some kind of feature there in front?
I've got this, you don't have this in. I've got this, you don't have this in your material, well, if we can give you a copy.
And did you change the parking that you thought you might?
So, and I did mention that I'm accompanied here with, um, our experts from Crosskey Architects and CR3, so, um, they may need to back me up on some of the details, but through the parking, we are gaining one space here. We're, and, um, and then we're, because of the dumpsters here, we'll be losing a few spaces here. And then, I forget, are we adding, are we, are we making any changes here? Yes.
Handicap.
Uh, just, just briefly, for the record, my name is Henry Withers, I'm, uh, with CR3, I'm a licensed landscape architect in Connecticut here in Simmsbury, uh, and we've been working with Crosskey and Mark and Mika on this project. Kind of real simple changes to the site, uh, we, uh, looked at making sure that all the handicap spaces meet ADA, current ADA code. And so that required, uh, modifying a couple spaces where we needed to hit 2%, we needed to put them in positions where they could get ramped either to, to the site. And it made more sense to move one of the spaces from here to the back, uh, because this is a more, uh, used spaces, is a, an area where the restaurant would be located and, you know, rather than put two up where there are only the five apartments, made more sense to bring it to the back. We did, um, take some spaces out at the back where we have some dumpsters, uh, located. And we also are raising a small section of this parking in here, because if you go out to the site, you can see where it's settled over the years, and there's actually water that's going over this embankment, which really isn't stable, we want to prevent that and have it go where it originally used to go, which is down to this, uh, cache basin now. So we're simply raising that up, but it's the same general configuration here, so it was sort of a, a trade in there. And then all of this would be reserved for the, for the residents as well as, um, a few spaces that would be semi-covered beneath what is currently the, uh.
ATMs.
The ATM station, and, uh, so, and that would be all part of this upper level area that would be serving the apartments. Uh, this, this is a separate spot, separate dumpster enclosures for the restaurant and for the residents, again, easy access for the residents to get over to their dumpster, uh, at the same elevation, so in winter time, they're, they're not trekking down, down steep slopes. Very minor, uh, the changes that currently there's a kind of a beat-up walk that leads from the building straight down to nowhere on Hot Meadow, and what we're proposing is a, a kind of a loop drive, a new loop, uh, walk that would open up the green in front of the, uh, you know, house, uh, or actually, Ensign House, and, uh, lead to the front entrance that way, and also lead over to the new porch and the gazebo area, opening a, a much more, uh, simple formal green in front of the home, which I think would be, uh, a pretty nice addition.
And what is in the circle?
Uh, so in the circle is a, is a paver area, probably brick pavers to sort of match some of what's going on, uh, in the little porch area there. And, uh, the idea would be that that would be a space where ceremonies might take place if somebody wanted to have some pictures taken if the other kind of things were happening on the site.
So what is that rectangular thing that's?
Re-.
In the circle, yeah.
Oh, that's just a, a, probably a plaque of some kind, maybe, may even have some historic, uh, information about.
So it's in the, it's ground level?
Yes. And then there, behind it, this, are you talking about this?
Uh, just trying to, it's hard to, it's, it's so tiny, you can't.
So, so this may be, uh, a, a raised arbor of some kind that would tie in with the final detailing of what's agreed to with the, uh, with the gazebo, would have probably the heavy timbers stained again to match the, the, uh, Ensign House, and, uh, some background plantings behind it.
Right, for you, for your parking count, I'm not sure you have an issue there, but, um, we were trying to keep parking not in front of the building, you got one spot that goes in front of the, front of the building.
It doesn't. Uh, it doesn't go, uh, uh, in front of this facade here, right?
No, it goes in front of the corner.
Well, we understood the line was the facade, and so we did keep it back from that, and, and that's kind of where the existing was. A little bit out here, let me switch over to the. Site prep line. So, this is the, this is the site prep line, uh, where we're taking out pavements.
All right, see, that lines up to the end of the building. Now you go on one parking.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, yes, so, so we basically pushed out an area that was a small sitting area for the residents.
How critical that one is, because it'd be preferable to me, I have, to, to eliminate that one spot.
We're seeing this just nudges back up in front of the facade.
Yeah.
Is this, this parking space right there?
Yeah. Would you, do you object to this little, uh, sitting area right outside the steps there for the residents, though? Uh, it was a kind of a private area that we could give them that the restaurant wouldn't, uh, impact. Uh, sort of brought the wall out in an L shape, it's a great change of about two feet in there, and we just wanted to sort of have that in the, in the.
I think that's fine, it's, it's the parking, you really don't want a car in front of the building, you know, blocking the.
We explored, uh, you know, splitting a couple, uh, extra feet on each side of these, three, and turning that into four spaces. We could, we could look at that again, if that's your preference.
Well, if you personally mind, I don't know how the rest of them feel about it, but that would just, if you're looking at the front, you'd, you'd keep it nice and clean without a car.
Well, there, that's, there's a grade change there, too.
There is a grade change.
So it's, it's down.
Yeah.
Right, so the car's going to be. But if you're here at the road, you know, all these plantings.
I don't hear when you're looking at this one.
Yeah, fair enough.
Now, it's kind of, they've, they've done a real good job of staying behind that front of the building, if, you know, for one parking space, I was hoping you could do that.
We're tearing up that space already for underground, uh, to fix the underground drainage, so. Finish it off with the parking space.
The three? Which, which space?
Right.
The, where, the three are, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Where he's questioning, so that's getting torn up to do underground, go to work, which has been compromised. And so just while you're repairing it, just, we could use another parking spot there, and we thought the front of the facade was the other part, so it would just be more convenient. Yeah, it's being torn up anyway for the underground gutter.
Yeah, but you could, if without the parking, you could move the, the plantings around to that area, which actually make it a little better for the, your seating area there to actually have a little bit of greenery there instead of another car group. Any other comments?
Just as, um, kind of an extension of the conversation about parking, I'm thinking back to a remark of the, uh, informal session of a few weeks ago where there was a comment about overflow parking. We all hope the restaurant is a great success and you are challenged with parking sooner than you think, but the remark was to the effect that overflow parking would be available in the commuter lots.
Right.
And I just, it may be widely known, but that, those commuter lots are zoned for commercial development. So hopefully, they're not going to be parking indefinitely. So I'm not suggesting that you're responsible for identifying right now what your plans are for overflow parking in the event of such success at your restaurant that it becomes an issue, but those, those parking lots hopefully will be something different sooner rather than later, so, okay.
Yeah, then the center, you have shared parking, so it's. So with the, so with the, um, ATMs, you're just, you're not changing it, you're just parking underneath the, the cupboard and then nothing happening with the, the building?
Right.
Okay, but there's a trash down in that area, corner.
Yeah, that's the residence trash.
Right.
There's two trashes. Yeah, commercials sign and residential sign. Anything else?
I have a comment on that parking spot. Historically, if you look at that mansion, the driveway went right up to there. It was only with the building of the annex and the driveway, and the sidewalk from the crosswalk that the, from the church, that they moved the driveway closer to get that sidewalk in. But historically, sort of like Downton Abbey, that it was driveway right up to the stairs. So this is actually bringing it closer to what it was historically. You can look at that whole picture.
Yeah, no, but they didn't park cars, yeah, that's, that's different than parking your car.
Mr. Chairman, would it be beneficial if the applicant stake that parking lot layout in the field to give you an opportunity as a commission in that potential two weeks to physically visit the site and see what those, that implication of that space is in the field as it relates to the building versus looking at a one-dimensional drawing?
How high is the wall around that? Is it like a?
It's, it's a sitting wall level, probably.
Like three, three feet or?
Oh, no, no, even, uh, two feet, maybe eighteen inches, and then sloped.
And then it goes down.
Correct, the grass.
And then it goes up to the lawn with the grand lawn, and, and.
But the parking is on.
The parking is down, down below, and I think, uh, as Mr. Gob pointed out, it's, uh, we have some rhododendrons wrapping it. So from Hot Meadow and from the restaurant, if anybody were out on the lawn or anybody just walking along, those cars would be tucked down, you know, two feet plus the three or four foot height of a rhododendron. Uh, so they would be pretty much, any car in that area would be relatively obscured.
There is a proposed revision that they are removing some sidewalk in the great lawn area and pushing that in a northerly direction, so there's some, you know, they're making an attempt to, um, balance some of the intrusions of other infrastructure with the removal of some existing. So I think, you know, having the plans, really looking at it in the field, um, I know, I, as your staff, I will go back out there. I was out there maybe for forty-five minutes to an hour this afternoon, um, but we'll be back on site looking at those small details, and I would, um, solicit you to also do that. Because again, looking at the one-dimensional plan here versus in the field, uh, there's a staunch difference.
Well, take a look at it in the next two weeks and, and see what you, what you think. Um, we have a motion to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table.
Ask somebody other than me.
Or, actually, like you look a bit more red.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table application eighteen fifteen until our next regularly scheduled.
I think twenty-five.
Eighteen twenty-five, my apologies. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table application eighteen twenty-five until our regularly scheduled meeting on June 4th at seven PM here. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming along nicely.
Yeah.
Moving on to, uh, new business, we have application, uh, we see a new applications, application eighteen twenty-six. Joanne Perry, Gifts of Love. Mr. Secretary needs to read that.
Well, I'm on the board for the Gifts of Love, so.
So let's not have you do that.
Do I need to read?
I, I will read it.
Yes, you shouldn't.
I need to recuse.
Well, this is just setting a public.
We're just setting a public hearing date?
Application eighteen, uh, eighteen twenty-six of Joanne Perry, Gifts of Love, Inc., agent town of Simmsbury owner for special exception pursuant to Article ten, Section eight of the Town of Simmsbury zoning regulations for temporary liquor permit for a series of one-day events on a property located at seventy-three Walkehead Road, Assessor's Map, one oh two, lock four thirty-nine, lock zero zero two, zone I one. Looking for someone to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for June 4th. I'll move this way.
I'll move that we schedule a public hearing for June 4th for the application eighteen twenty-six.
Okay, is that good?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not a stand.
With the, one app's, it's mentioned. Okay, uh, application eighteen twenty-seven. This one I think we can proceed with.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a representative here from the sign company regarding this. Again, it's a proposal to modify the signage at Valley Liquors. Uh, under the Simmsbury Center Code, there is a requirement for a fifteen-day notice, so although DRB did, uh, act favorably in the recommendation to you, um, staff is recommending you table it. But with regards to the application, if you have any questions regarding the signage or DRB's actions this evening, uh, I can speak to that as well as the applicant, um, present tonight with, from the sign company.
DRB's recommendation was approved?
DRB did make a favorable recommendation.
Yes.
Subject to, right now, if you look at the plan in your packet, there was an installation at some point in time of a lighting bar that shines up on the sign. DRB's recommendation to you was the elimination of that and the proposal of an alternative to that. Your ability to table this this evening also gives the applicant the opportunity to work with the landlord on an alternative to that uplighting. The uplighting is not allowed under our regulations. There's literally a light bar that shines straight up at the sign. That can be downlit, goosenecks, or a lighting bar, it can be haloed, there are other options to that.
It's like haloed.
But not up or internally. The sign that was submitted to you more closely resembles the sign that was there with the introduction of new modern materials, and slightly changes, changes in the boldness of the letters. Uh, but again, in, in DRB's opinion, was more in keeping with the, the historic sign that was there.
So the sign that's proposed is the same dimensions as the one that is there now?
No.
Was there before?
It is the same dimensions of the sign that came down.
Which is not the one?
This thing's called existing. Existing is not the one that we're comparing to.
The existing unpermitted sign is larger than what was there prior to its placement. The application puts it back to the square footage that was there prior to the more vivid red sign.
But it looks the same here.
It's, it is smaller.
Okay.
It, it's six to eight inches, it's not significant, but it is.
Yeah, it, it is the same, it actually looks bigger, but.
You literally have to count bricks.
And when you measure for signage, do you, how do you count the letters that go over the, the back?
Draw a box around it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So does this then become the pattern for the rest of the front of the building? Because now, I think I perceive there's no other signs on the front of the building now.
Historically, there was a unified sign plan approved for the building, so the Valley Liquors and the Dunkin' Donuts were both that darker maroon background with gold leathering. So I would say if someone came back to the Dunkin' Donuts space, you would be looking for them to match, uh, in some manner what is before you this evening, which goes back to the historic signage on the building.
So I don't want to belabor this, but then you'll communicate with any successor prior, hopefully, before they actually put up a sign that's not been approved, that the building owner's on board with this, that anybody else that comes along for those spaces needs to be consistent with this one.
And the occupants in the back have the same?
They were, they were, they had, uh, more leeway in the unified sign program. Giving their prominence associated with Hot Meadow versus Iron Horse.
Okay, do we have any other feedback on this, or do we have a motion to table it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table application eighteen twenty-seven until our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 4th at seven PM in this room.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next application is eighteen twenty-eight of Darren Sona, sign, Rickford Sign and Design, Agent E. And A I N G, Simmsbury Commons LP, owner for a site plan, member for a site permit for a T C. permit for TCBY frozen yogurt on the property located at five thirty, oh, Bushy Hill Road. Something for us, I don't know. So DRB saw this?
DRB did see this this evening, and DRB did make a favorable recommendation to the commission. There was also staff's recommendation with DRB that it is clear that the sign is not proposed to be internally illuminated, and you will see in staff's letter dated May twenty-first, there is a draft motion with two items associated with that motion. Item number one being that signs shall not be internally and/or externally illuminated. That's not part of the proposal in this process, they would have to come back to you. And two, just as a precautionary note, so we don't potentially have a repeat of a Simmsbury Center matter, that a pre-construction meeting is held between either the owner, the installer, or the contractor who is going to be putting the sign up, because if you look at the sign detail, the sign is being relocated from Boomfield, and that sign does have the ability to be internally illuminated. So we want to just make sure there is nothing lost in translation during the installation process, that there isn't a plug and a light, because that occasionally occurs.
Right, so is there enough lighting on that van to light it without direct light? Because you said this application doesn't include any lighting, but is there already existing?
The center has sufficient lighting to it, and the two signs to the right and left of it are not externally or internally illuminated.
Okay, and you can see them in there?
Correct.
Yeah, they're just.
And some of the difficulties there, we did look at potentially adding goosenecks to it, but the, the way the building, frontage for the TCBY shop, it's off-center, so if you, the two signs that flank it right and left don't have any goosenecks or lighting, and if you introduce them to this, what would be the middle store, it's actually off-center left. And I, I, my experience would be is design review would have struggled with that, that unbalance.
Is there any signage on, on the sidewalk underneath the cover?
No, but they are allowed as part of the zoning permit process to have twenty percent, so if they have hours of operation, we would handle that administratively.
Yeah, no, I just thought on the walkway, we had signs going down so that you could see.
Oh, under the canopy?
Yeah, under the canopy. I thought most of the stores had those.
The blade signs?
Yeah, underneath, underneath the.
Right, they're not lit, but they're there.
All right, so you will have something there, or is that not part of this?
We did not, we did not choose to do that.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yeah, we will work with the, the shop owner on.
So you can look down and see where you're heading.
You've just seen on, on us where the store hours are there and, and information about the store, the vinyl letterings on the glass, and we do allow that in the zoning code. We can do that administratively.
I'm not missing something, there is no sketch of a sign.
Yeah, we don't have it.
Okay. Oh, you do not have that?
No.
It was in the package.
I have signed it.
Digital version?
They told me that's in the, I have.
We did, it's just not, not on here.
I, I'll apologize on behalf of the staff.
We'll come here.
We have them.
Is this where the TCBY was before, wasn't there? Didn't you have?
We were on the other side, yeah. We were in Avon Marketplace, this is Simmsbury Commons, so right in front of them.
I remember you had the two stories, but I just couldn't remember which was.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It's off-center, that would bug me.
Questions, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application eighteen twenty-eight, Darren Sona, Hartred Sign and Design, Agent E and A I N G, Simmsbury Commons LP, owner for a site plan amendment for the sign permit for TCBY frozen yogurt on the property located at five thirty Bushy Hill Road, Assessor's Map B twenty, block five oh eight, lot zero zero one dash B, Zone B dash three. My motion is with certain modifications and conditions, as detailed in Exhibit four, with the following conditions and modifications. One, the sign shall not be internally and/or externally illuminated. And two, a pre-construction meeting must be held between the Commission Town Staff, Director of Planning and Community Development, CEO, and the contractor prior to the installation of the sign to review conditions associated with the approval regarding no illumination and the approved square footage. Such meetings shall be scheduled at a mutually convenient time of all participants.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You may ask.
In my soccer practice, it's over. It's time for cooldowns.
Okay, next order of business is correspondence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your pictures?
Do we have CVS?
No. Mr. Chairman, you.
You have CVS still.
Yeah, we still have application eighteen twenty-nine. My alarm went off and you were ready to tell me. Well, it's eight o'clock, I thought you had that time.
Um, Mr. Chairman, simply with this application, it is in the Simmsbury Center Code, they're required to do their fifteen-day notice, so staff is simply recommending that you table this matter until your June fourth meeting. With regards to the application, it's relatively simplistic. CVS is changing their insignia associated with, there's now a heart associated with CVS. They're not rebranding the site in red and white, they are rebranding the site in our traditional green and white associated with the center.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table application eighteen twenty-nine until our regularly scheduled meeting, regularly scheduled meeting on June fourth at seven PM here in this room.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you may ask. Okay, now, General Commission Business, correspondence?
Nothing to add this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, zoning regs, did that subcommittee meet?
We did not meet, we were tend to be looking at Wednesday, and I wanted to confirm with everybody before you leave.
This coming Wednesday? This coming Wednesday?
This coming Wednesday. Before you, you can adjourn and then the three members can talk.
Okay, then, a motion to adjourn? So moved? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Good job, Kevin.
Thank you.
Not five minutes, but we moved it right along.
Less than.
Got a lot done.